Right.
Call to order.
In accordance with section five of the open public meeting, open public meetings that you guys had noticed of this meeting was made by post-notice at North Town Hall. And now it officially doesn't, doesn't make the newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually, beginning this meeting will take place on Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at Melbourne Board of Education. David Bradford.
Yeah.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yeah.
Gary Rosen.
Here.
Regina Truitt.
Here.
That's all.
Here.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Yes.
Steven Cohen.
Here.
Vice Chair Justin Caulfield.
Here.
Chair Jessica Clark.
Here. Um, okay, first of all, Eileen, I just want to confirm with you, we no longer need to use the microphones with this.
You don't have to, apparently this takes everything out to ten, when she finds.
Most people can't hear you.
Okay, yeah, most people are having trouble hearing, okay. Um, we are going to start with some new business, the adoption of the amended calendar dates, as everyone had a chance to look those over. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second resolution.
Second. Second.
David Bradford.
Here.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Garry Robben.
Yes.
Regina Truitt.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Justin Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Okay, so those new meeting dates have been adopted, um, next we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Um, the first set of minutes is from May fifth, twenty twenty five.
May twelve.
Oh, May twelve, I'm so sorry, May twelve, twenty twenty five. Um, and do we have any corrections or changes? Let's see, um, would someone like to make a motion?
Move to accept the minutes?
Doctor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It has been approved, um, the next is from June ninth, twenty twenty five, do we have any corrections or changes to that seven minutes? Let's see, would anyone like to make a motion?
I just did.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the final set of minutes would be for June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, any corrections or changes? Would someone like to make a motion?
So move.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the resolutions. Um, the first one is calendar forty eighteen dash twenty four, uh, the property location is fifty two Pine Street in Melbourne. Eileen, when you get back, would you just tell us who is eligible on that set?
Are you on this screen? This is, did you find it?
Yeah.
Eligible, Dave Bradford, Shandrew Hurdani, Neil Mino Roberts, Steve Cohen, Joseph Caulfield, Jessica Black.
Okay, first of all, are there any corrections or changes? Okay, would someone want to make a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Shand, David Bradford.
Yes.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Next up, we have calendar forty twenty nine dash twenty five, uh, the property location is ninety one Troy Drive in Short Hills, who would be eligible, same people, uh, do we have any corrections or changes? Do I have a motion?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
David Bradford. Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Um, next up is calendar forty thirty two dash twenty five, uh, the location is Hugh Jefferson Avenue, Short Hills, and is it the same?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any corrections or changes? Someone like to make a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
David Bradford.
Yes.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Next is calendar forty thirty nine dash twenty five, the location is ninety four Pine Street, Melbourne, is it the same group?
Yes.
Okay, um, any corrections or changes? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
David Bradford.
Yes.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Next is calendar forty twenty six dash twenty five, the property location is fifty five Elm Street, is it the same group?
Uh, this is. Eligible, Shandrew, David, Gary, Regina, Beth, Joe, and Jess.
Okay, are there any corrections or changes? Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve calendar forty two six dash two five, second in line.
Second. David Bradford.
Yes.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Gary Rosen.
Yes.
Regina Truitt.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes. Next is calendar forty thirty five dash twenty five, property location fifty nine Elm Street in Melbourne, who's eligible?
Same people.
Same people. Um, any corrections or changes?
I have a quick question for council, um, this is.
I think this is the one where we have the three hundred and seventy five square feet.
Do you think that's clear?
No, I think that, um, I took a look at it, Regina also was kind enough to raise that, and what I want to do, um, is add a condition there that, that we called it kind of a honeycomb type of, um, service, that that piece of driveway remain impermeable space in the future.
I sent an email back, actually I'm looking back at my notes back on the fourteenth, but I, I talked about, um, there were multiple conditions, including that if you maintain this permeable imperceptibility, which you said needs to be defined, um, small square footage area, and then frequent use for automobiles and a one-car garage.
Right, that's, those aren't conditions, those are more kind of recitals, but I, but just in terms of the conditions, I think that's a condition that to be added, and I'll go back and I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
So are you going to add another, a full number condition, or?
We're going to add a full other condition.
So we're going to hold off on it?
I think we can, we can hold off on it.
Yeah.
I think it's okay.
Okay. Um, so we're going to hold off on that, okay. Um, last up, we have calendar forty thirty six dash twenty five, it's forty five Wordsworth Road, in Short Hills, who's eligible?
Uh, David, Shandrew, Gary, Regina, Steve, and Jessica.
Any corrections or changes? Would someone like to make a motion?
Mm-hmm. Second.
David Bradford.
Yes.
Shandra Hurdani.
Yes.
Gary Rosen.
Yes.
Regina Truitt.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Jessica Black.
Yes.
So super is going to be tabled.
Super, we'll table to the next meeting, and I want to take another look.
Um, okay, so first of all, um, I just want to, uh, make sure everyone has noticed that calendar, uh, four zero four zero dash twenty five, um, out here, uh, from One Marine Place, Short Hills, that application is being carried through August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, with no quota notice, so anyone who's here for that, you will be hearing it here on August twenty fifth.
In this location.
In this, in this location. Um, we're going to make a slight change to our agenda tonight, we're going to start with, um, calendar forty thirty seven dash twenty five, Wenzel, from three oh three Forest Drive South, Short Hills. We're going to give it until eight thirty PM, and then there's going to be a hard stop so that we can continue the rest of the night with the little Puck tennis center application. Are you ready to present? Okay.
Please. You're moving the calendar.
Hey, that we're going to testify, if you just raise your right hand, please. You swear or firm testimony about the event tonight for stealing, you dispute the whole truth, should we come by the truth?
Yes.
Let's get your names for the record, please.
Daniel Wenzel.
Elizabeth Wenzel.
Timothy Blessing.
Thank you.
Are you going to start?
We're ready.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here, I really appreciate the time. My wife and I, Elizabeth Wenzel, lived in Short Hills about four years ago, rented for a little bit, and then we bought in the same area of Glenwood. We've lived in the house for almost four years now, we love it, love the neighborhood, we have two girls, five, two. Our five-year-old starts in Glenwood next year, we're really looking forward to it, so, uh, we love our neighbors, we love them riding the bikes in the streets. Um, for us, we want to be there long-term, we're making some small modifications to the house, normal things like windows, uh, but for us, our family's growing, uh, and we want to build a bigger mudroom. I think it's important for us, again, as I said, we want to be there for the long-term, um, we want to invest in the house, uh, we want our daughters to grow up in Glenwood, and further in the Melbourne school districts. Anything else?
I don't think anything much more to add, um, again, sadly.
We have, speak up.
Been, um, you know, loving the neighborhood that we live in, loving such close proximity to Glenwood Elementary School, um, our oldest will be just starting there, so we have a long ways to go in that school between her and our younger daughter as well, so we're really looking forward to things in that area and in that house, we've grown to love, and are just looking to move for a small modification, I can get a little more functional.
I, I think for us, what was important, we first talked to Tim, we're working with him, um, we've talked to our neighbors, we're not trying to be intrusive with the neighborhood, we want to keep the same, um, look and feel as the neighborhood in the back of the house, uh, we're not trying to modify anything to disturb the neighborhood, and again, we talked to our neighbors, so we think that's really important to work partnership with them, so that they agree that that is to be compromised on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim to walk.
Could you just give us your qualifications first, please?
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and New York, and I've been licensed for thirty years, my license is in good standard. Here in front of this board on numerous occasions. Many other boards around in the state.
Thank you. Thanks.
Uh, okay, the site is three oh three Forest Drive South, block four, block nineteen oh three, it's an R three zone, it's a, um, seventy-foot wide lot, it's a little wider than what's required, and, um, our intent here is to construct a mudroom addition behind the existing garage, so one-story building, it's not visible from the street anyway at all, um, concealed by the garage behind. Part of it is on, it's really about a eighty-square-foot addition. And sixty square feet of that is on an existing deck. So sixty square feet of it is already lot coverage, right, but it's being modified now to building cover. And then we added another twenty square feet to get us up to the total of the, and then just take you to my BOA sheet, my BOA one, looks perfect.
No, it's all so perfect. You, you said R three zone, but it's actually an R six.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's an R, it's an R six.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I had my a meniscus tear repaired on Friday, but I seem to be walking around. But it makes me a little, it's a little. It's a little bit rough. So anyway, I'm on my BOA one sheet, and you can see the existing front elevation, which is exactly the same as yours. There's no change at all, the, the addition is actually occurring behind the garage, not visible at all in the street, give over to my survey. On the, uh, you know, on the left side of my sheet, we can see these square area on the survey where the existing deck is, where the lot coverage is, in this thin little line that we added, it's about a foot and a half wide, that's the twenty square feet that we're adding of the new area. But flip on to my BOA two sheet. What this really allows us to do is to leave the existing garage, take away a small laundry room presently behind the garage, and just give us a larger laundry room in a mudroom, top of that, where the existing deck is now, in that small area. And I added a little bit to width, so we would have enough width to be able to get cabinets on either side of the mudroom. And then we come into the kitchen the same way we did before, make a little bit of interior alteration or updating, but basically, the whole addition is just occurring in this area. This project has a variance request for side combined. And the side combined, you notice the worst condition on the left and the worst condition on our right, so the existing side combined is only about eighteen feet, or no, it's only about thirteen feet.
It's thirteen point four.
Thirteen point four, right, because it's very tight, or proposed, we'd make it eighteen point oh seven, and that's, this is eleven point four seven on this side, plus the six point six on the opposite side. Required is twenty-four feet, that's a request for, I think it's six point eight feet.
Did you measure that, Tim, from the area where you're constructing the proposed mudroom?
Yes, we went from the worst condition on the left side to the proposed condition on the, or the worst condition on the right side, post-addition on us.
So you're taking a conservative view of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the, um, the other thing where we're failing is FAR. And the FAR request here is for point nine percent, or under one percent, it's really eighty square feet, the additional FAR. And what's happening is the site is already overrun. But our, this new FAR that we're adding is actually concealed from the street, not visible at all, and they really tucked into the corner, and a much better condition on the side yard than is existing with the garage, the garage itself is existing at six point nine, and our proposed is to be at eleven point four seven, as a one-story building. Melbourne daily, the two requests for tonight. And move on to my BOA three sheet. Can see how we just brought our one-story building around in the back, that's the point we're at, that eleven point four seven, I'm on my rear elevation. And on the left side, you can see the existing mudroom area and the addition, additional mudroom area that we're in, this is the even square feet, including the two feet, two-foot line that I added along with these. I think this is approvable. It's driving me crazy, sorry, it's, I think it's approvable, because the, the building is, the addition's only fourteen-foot line, it's a one-story building, it gives me a mudroom on the back, it allows me to get everything that they got to get into the mudroom, so that the stuff doesn't end up all in the garage, and the car itself can get into the garage, cleans up our street skid, and it, um, this building itself only has a building height of about twenty-seven feet. Maybe it's not like this building is actually overpowering on street skid, all of these homes are, um, actually renovated homes, and they all are maintaining the existing building height. So I think this is a much smarter solution than building a vertical building up to thirty-two feet, or, you know, with gables that are facing the front, and a much more monolithic looking building. The, uh, that's really everything I have, the increase in FAR is a point nine percent, really under one percent, and with side combined, we've actually a big, large improvement. The existing side combined condition is thirteen point four, whereas twenty-four point five is required, and our proposed is to be at eighteen point oh seven. Is there any questions?
Tim, uh, the building that exists there now exceeds a lot of zoning book requirements, were there any prior approvals granted for this case?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I think that this work could have been done before FAR was finished, it doesn't fail for building code.
It what?
It doesn't fail for building code.
No, but it failed for side yards and FAR, and even if it was before FAR, the building that we bought, it seemed relatively newer than something put up in the fifties.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't know.
What? That's for fun.
We can only access the mudroom from the garage?
We can only access the mudroom from the garage, rear of the garage, and also the rear of the house, right?
Correct. Well, from, yeah. From the exterior.
From the exterior, yeah.
Yes.
And so, and there's a window proposed for the mudroom?
Yes, we have a window on the side.
What's in between that mudroom and the neighborhood?
Inside.
Is there landscaping, something possible to see in and out?
Really, pretty dense, the landscape. I can just see twenty foot high
With the generator, that's relatively close to everything back there. Does the generator get moved?
We haven't moved it.
Is it going to get moved as part of his plan? Because I also think it has to be so far away from the building, so far away from the neighbor. Does this construct an effect, the generator?
No, no, not moving.
But it has to be like ten
Five from a, from a window.
Five windows or doors, five feet. Five teen inches. Oh, okay.
But the generator is
But through that
Yeah, me too, but it was a long time ago.
Some of the generators are different. Like some have different requirements.
Another question for the rentals. You mentioned that you spoke with the neighbors. It was three oh one, the one to your left as you look straight at the house?
Yeah.
Did you speak with them? And did they, what, what was the nature of the conversation? Did they see the plan or what, what was the nature of the conversation?
So I'd say we went by code or whatever, we notified via mail. We also spoke to them numerous times. We let them know that we're making additions to the mudroom. We've also asked them, as we go through the bill, if there's any questions, if there's any disturbance, let's work together. We will address it immediately. So we want to be good partners.
Have they seen the plan or was it just a verbal conversation?
It was a verbal conversation.
And how far is their property from the addition that is proposed to be moved? Like in these
On the left.
On the left side?
Or on the
It's no, it's no further than the garage that extends out?
The two driveways on the same side. So they got a full, full garage and then they closed. So they go eleven and a half, they go setback, and then they go twelve feet and then but probably twenty five feet.
There's not burst off than the pre-existing side yard setback on that side.
No, no, it's, it's better.
But that's still violation of the side yard setback.
Yes.
Yes.
The, the lot coverage in this site is under by five hundred and seventy five feet.
Well, how, what's the minimums, a lot, what's minimum area for this zone?
Six thousand.
And what's this area?
I think it's eight thousand
Six hundred and forty-five.
Something like that.
So I mean, it probably doesn't have a coverage issue because it's so big for the zone.
Right. The dislot, the lot to, two lots to the right are also large. Then the lots going up further, it's smaller, more around that, sort of sixty foot.
And you have that storm sewer ran away in the rear.
Yes. And the neighbor has his storm sewer ran away right.
Any other questions?
Like, just a general question. I'm concerned with the FAR, it's very tight back there. Can you think of any way you can pull that in? Or reduce that FAR request?
Well, I guess we have It will take it a little bit unusable. And it's not visible at all from the street.
I guess the deck doesn't
No, and we didn't project as far as the evening area. We pulled it in, two feet from the back of the building. So in some ways, I think we really made it about as small as
Any other questions from board members? Do you have any questions from anyone in the audience?
Actually, I, I have one more question from Mr. Klassen. Tim, you mentioned something about the height, you can go thirty-two feet there. Did I get that wrong?
Yes.
Were you planning on the mudroom on the third floor?
No, no. I just say that, you know, if somebody wanted to tear the building down, you could build a much taller building. And this is really I want to say the minimus, this addition, although I know that's a bad word. But that this is a relatively small addition in the rear, it's not Whereas a bulky building
That anyone in the future decided to go above that, they may have to get
Exactly.
I guess, yeah.
I think for us, just trying to be respectful, there is a side window of our neighbor that they have visibility to the street over our garage, and so not to build up that way, but just use the backyard or the back area to accommodate the mudroom versus trying to make an addition above the garage. That would completely block them from It's something that we consider as well.
Any other questions from the board? No question. Is the existing washer and dryer is in that location? Can we just relocate it to the garage during construction? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience on this application? I'm going to close the public portion and I would love to hear thoughts from my fellow board members.
Just to recall that because this is an FAR variance, it's a form of deep variance and requires five affirmative votes.
Would anyone like to start?
I'll, I'll start. You know, whenever I see an FAR for a large number, a large percentage, like four point four percent, it's a big number for this board. But, you know, when you, when you look at it in context, then this house is already over in, in FAR, I mean, they're really locked into, you know, the current house that they're in, which, you know, really to them needs a mudroom. I don't think that that's an unreasonable request. I mean, they really wouldn't be able to do, you know, much on this house. Things are already over in the FAR. I think that it, it's been planned very thoughtfully to go over the deck. You know, to not build a second story onto it. I, you know, I don't, I mean, it's, it's eighty-five square feet. I don't think it's asking too much. And again, it's, it's kind of the same thing with the side yard setback. You know, they're kind of locked into where they are. So you, you can't really do anything else. Like, I don't see another way of kind of achieving a mudroom. You know, do you think that this is being respectful to the neighbors? You're definitely not going to see it from the street. I was back there earlier today, there's a lot of heavy landscaping. So I personally could, you know, support both the FAR and the mine side yard setback. But I would love to get everyone else's thoughts.
I will go second and I will go the opposite way. It's a big house that exists there now. I'm pretty sure that for that house to be constructed, there had to be some kind of approvals granted for the side door and for area. That's big. As Mr. Klassen pointed out, it's only going up less than one percent on the FAR from existing, but the existing is already three points, something. Well, combined would be four point four percent over and we shut things down for less than that. I, it's a great property, I was by it as well, the landscaping is great, it's a very, very pretty house. As far as the mud would be an essential item, I mean, if there was a bathroom that was necessary or something like that, I would go, I would look at that a little more careful again, just don't see a mudroom being a necessity item. But that probably takes care of my comments.
Yeah, I think I'm probably more Jessica's camera. Sorry, Joe. I, I do think that Look, I think to your point, Joe, I think this is already over and over reasonable amount. Which I'm not happy about and certainly adding any additional to it is not, it's not great. But I think this is really a very minor ask. You know, a mudroom is not essential, but I also, but is, I think, young kids very helpful to have. And so I, I think, given the, the relatively small ask on the FAR, you know, we're clearly not going to be able to do anything more in terms of that they are in the future. And the fact that this is in the back, it's not really visible to the street. We're not concerned about massing in this situation, no one's going to see it. I, I, I would
I could go next. I would echo those comments. I think fairly put, this has been inherited in, in, in a way that it's been bought with pre-existing non-proformities. And I think it's been thoughtful in terms of the addition. And again, mudroom debatable, which way, you know, you, you'll see it. But I see that, you know, it's not, not a very huge ask. And it's actively done in terms of where it's added, it's not visible from the street. It's not imposing as a structure by itself, the way it stands. And with this addition, it won't be any further. So I could be supportive as well. On both fronts.
Well, that's why I don't want to do that anymore. I'm actually more on what Mr. Callfield's thought. I feel bad about this because I can see it's a, it's a tight fit back there and we get so many of these cases where you can see it's a small house. A, a small situation that leaves you very little room to go over. But then again, you're already over substantially. So, and, and I agree that a mudroom is not critical as a bathroom or a kitchen. So I, I would lean towards not being But I do love your house and I love the glass-inposed kitchen.
I'll say, I think in reflection, it's, you know, it's an eighty-foot addition and I think it's going to give the family a lot of utility. I think they designed it in such a way that won't affect or impact the, the view from the street, the, you know, the neighborhood, the situation, everything that, you know, the feel of the zone and the character of that neighborhood. So I think all things taken into consideration, I think I would be supportive of that.
Risk of praising Mr. Klassen, you know. I think this is a really good use of eighty square feet. There's a tremendous amount of utility for a small even if it's not essential.
Doc, do you think that you could just remind us kind of what, what we're supposed to take into consideration when considering FAR?
Sure, so the issue at hand in terms of positive criteria is while we're calling for a set of several positive criteria for the variance, where in this case we have what's called a deep floor FAR core ratio variance, where the applicant is always has the room proof. What the applicant needs to do is to demonstrate that the site can still accommodate the FAR as proposed, given the ask in this case. So we're talking, and, and Tim, can you just clarify? Because I'm, I'm looking at your summary of variances requested. I'm focusing on the FAR. And you have extent of variance, three hundred and eighty-two. It says feet. And the notations before that are dealing with, you know, existing FAR of thirty-three eighty proposed as thirty-four sixty-five and the maximum is three oh eight rated. So your, your, your extent of variance, I don't think is three, when you say three hundred and eighty-two, you're saying from what is permitted?
Over permitted.
Over permitted, but, but what you're increasing is only approximately eighty square.
Yes.
And the question is then whether, thank you for clarification, whether the extra eighty square feet can be accommodated on this site, taking into consideration existing improvements that are already there. Because you, you recall, if the application is denied, house is not going anywhere. We're still going to have a situation where we have excessive FAR and violated combined side door, etc. Right? So in terms of the negative criteria, they have to prove two things. Number one, that there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And there's been testimony about the impact, whatever it may be, on the surrounding neighbors. And also the applicant has demonstrated that there's no significant impairment to the master plan and zoning order. So put it another way, what does the master plan intend to protect against by recommending an FAR standard for particular zones? And also to the extent that the ordinance may be violated, may be substantially impaired by exceeding what the maximum is for the R, was it R six? Fire fight? R six zone. So.
Can you clarify, can the property accommodate? What does it mean by accommodate?
Well, so in other words, if you're, I'll put it in, in a different way. If you're walking by, you're driving by the property. And you look at the property with the proposal. And you're saying to yourself, you know, oh, you know, seems too crowded, there's too much, you know, going on. Or is there enough light, air, open space, circulation? Right? Whether you drive by and we see a building and we talked about it very frequently, there's just too much massing on this building. Or, or any building. And that is indicative of the fact that the FAR is maybe too much. And you also need to consider and should consider what the FARs are of other properties in the neighborhood. So for those of you who traveled around the neighborhood and took a tour, you know, is this, is this house, or is it going to stick out as way too much for the lot in comparison to light, air, open space, circulation around other properties in the neighborhood?
And that's from the street or is that from the property itself?
Well, the, the law doesn't say from the street. It says in the surrounding neighborhoods. You can interpret that as wish, whether it says the growth lies or
Okay. Thank you. So I, I ask for that because I do think it's really helpful sometimes for us to, you know, remind ourselves exactly what we're taking into consideration with FAR. And, you know, just to get my final thoughts, I do think that the applicant satisfies both the positive and negative criteria. I don't personally think that it's fair to penalize the applicant for the existing home. There's no indication that this home ever needed to come before the zoning board. We would have, we would have seen the resolution if they came before the board for an ask. And we don't know the history of the house. And it could have been built prior to, you know, our current ordinances, you know, that specify what the FAR could be. So, you know, my, you know, again, I mean, you heard my thoughts in the beginning, but, you know, just wanted to kind of conclude with that. Does anyone else have any comments? I could just add, I appreciate Mr. Simon's review of that. Thank you for asking. Is that, I guess it solidifies my opinion because when I went back there, my thoughts were, oh, this is tight. And we're so close to the neighbors and now we're adding more. And so in my opinion, I, I think that even this modest improvement, which I think, I think is, is a, is a not a necessity, but is probably asking for too much on a property that is already so far over. FAR and, and we often do look at houses and, and the way they are, and then we make our determination based on where they are, even though it's not the fault they bought the house for, you know, it was tight.
Mr. Klassen, you've heard, you know, the, the comments from the board. Do you want to proceed to the vote?
Yes. I'd just like to say that the
Oh, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
You have, you have to make a motion to
Would someone like to make a motion to open that up?
Move to open?
I'd just like to say that the streetscape is what's That's what people see, that's the public land that you can walk on, road. The streetscape, and from the streetscape, this building really has, isn't visible at all. It may be true that it is visible from some of the neighbors in the rear. But there is already a deck there and the building itself is nestled in that corner. And only really fourteen feet off the ground at its highest. You know, the gutter mark is about eight feet. So I don't think it has, it's any more claustrophobic in the rear yard because of this building addition. That's all I want. That's all I want.
Um, let me just throw a. On slash clarify, so, you know, I, I do think that. In terms of the first problem in the negative criteria, it's determined that there's no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. I do believe that that includes adjoining abandoned properties, you know, very often you have. Objectors or certain parties come out, um, you know, if they're in the rear of the property, so it's not just what you see from the streetscape. On the other hand. That based on the testimony that we heard, that the only neighbor who would be impacted from this. Is that there is mature, apparently mature landscaping that is separating, uh, the buildings, and it was not visible. And we certainly, to the credit of the applicants. Who apparently has communicated with that neighbor, we don't have any. Objectors, questioners, which are going through the. The application. And Eileen, you should just clarify, who's, who's eligible is the seven members eligible?
Okay.
Well, when you're ready, just to make sure, because we have nine people.
Yeah.
Right, so everyone will love with the exception of us.
The public portion is still open?
I'm. Oh.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Only.
Listen, I appreciate the debate. Um. I think for us, we're not looking to increase the value of our home. We're looking to make more functional use for our daughters who are going through sports. We got to build a sink in there. Right now, we wash our kids' clothes, kitchen sink. So I think it's important for us for them to come in, take their shoes off. Um. Be able to use the laundry room, you know, it's already tight as it is, or the laundry machine is. Um, and so for us to clean their clothes, clean their swimsuits, whatever it is, right then and there versus going to the bathtub. Going to the kitchen sink. So for us, it is an essential use, but again, I understand this debate.
Um, okay, so to you, you do want to proceed with the vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to break it up.
So we're, we're re-closing.
Oh, sorry, we have to, yeah, public portion is now closed. Um, we are going to divide it up, um, you know, to do the FAR, uh, deep variance. Uh, second, so I think the first thing we'll do is we will take a vote on combined side yard setback. Um, and then we'll move on to the other. So would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other, for the combined side yard setback? Um, obviously, of all the eligible members of the board to vote.
And this is the purer setting, yeah.
I love your group.
Wait a second.
In second.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Shadra Vardhani?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
No.
That's all?
Yes.
Justin Caulfield?
No.
Jessica Platt?
Yes. Um, the next will be the, um, FAR variance. Would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other, for that?
Make a motion that we approve the.
Wait a second.
I can second.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Shadra Vardhani?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
No.
That's all?
Yes.
Justin Caulfield?
No.
Jessica Platt?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's, it's approved, but for a.
And the big one, thank you.
Okay, we're, we're going to take a, a quick break. Okay, moving right along, um, we now have calendar. Four zero one nine dash twenty-four. It's Little Club Tennis Center, sixty, lived in screen in Melbourne.
I'm Chair, uh, before the applicant proceeds, I do have a.
Let's just start off, let's have Mr. Gilson at least introduce the application. And just tell us what the application is, and then we're going to get into those.
Sure. Uh, good evening, I'm Chairman, members of the board, my name is Matthew Gilson from the Law Firm, working show and books. Here on behalf of Little Club Tennis Center LLC. The application for you tonight is for the existing. What was formerly known as the Wyoming Club. And it's two tennis courts with a clubhouse. The clubhouse currently is structurally unsound. So we're here tonight, I have a patient. To reconstruct the clubhouse, as well as to adjust the placement of the tennis.
So. Before we, before we get started, uh, the reason I'm, I'm sort of bumping in is that. Prior to this evening, um. The board. Through Eileen has received, uh, correspondence addressed. Uh, to her regarding the notice, the public notice. So the board knows before. We take jurisdiction here in application, one of the things we need to determine is whether. The, uh, notice is sufficient, you know, we find that the notice is not sufficient. We'll either adjourn the hearing, ask the applicant to re-notice, et cetera. So in this case, um. There was, uh, a letter, uh, submitted by Michael Silver. On behalf of his clients, and he'll be up here in a second to talk about that. Um, objecting to the notice that was published for the newspaper and sent to Nathan, the big two hundred feet of the site. Um, Mr. Gilson, representing the applicant. Uh, responded, I believe, maybe today, uh, with a letter responding to, to that letter. So, um, I think it's prudent for the board. In, in fairness to all, to hear, um, first Mr. Silver, and then Mr. Gilson, and then, um. Give you guys my thoughts, and then. You can just determine from the onset whether the board's comfortable accepting jurisdiction. Uh, of the application proceeding in case tonight. So, Mr. Silver.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Simon, good evening, board members, uh, members of the public. My name is Michael Silver. I'm an attorney at the law firm, Detr. Chesco Dayton, located in Warren Township, New Jersey. And I represent, uh, Tyra Miel Shaw, fifty-seven Chestnut Street. Um, they are the adjoining, uh, property owners of property adjacent to the subject. Property. Um, before I get into a letter that I had submitted to the board dated July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. I wanted to touch on a point, uh, something that I didn't explicitly reference in the letter in reference to notice. So I have your ordinance here, twenty-seven seventy-eight dash twenty-four. Attached to this notice is your development regulate, uh, your, your application for development. Is in my hand here, and was submitted as part of this application. Now, not on the, uh, application that's listed online, but if you go through the application form. You'll see if you turn to number. Twelve. Copy of notice. And again, this is all been adopted by ordinance. This is what you require for your ordinance. You require for your ordinance that specific variances in our waivers being requested. And you require that it include the sections of the development regulations and zoning ordinances from which relief is sought applicable. That's number two under twelve, and if anyone needs a copy, I have a copy I can provide to the board. Your ordinance requires that.
Yeah, we can.
Page six on the application. Okay, hold on.
Page six. No, that's the vacation of taxes.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
This application.
Oh, bother.
Yeah, it is number twelve. It is listed as an application for development. It is Schedule F. Under. Section, give me one moment. Section four twenty-five point one of your ordinance.
Are you talking about a form that?
Yeah.
What township are you talking about? One of the forms here? Hold on, hold on.
That's.
Hold on a second.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just, show me what you're referring to.
I'm referring to the, the application for development.
Yeah.
Which is required by the township's ordinance.
Tell me what page you're referring to, so I can show it to the chair.
There's, I don't believe there are page numbers, so.
Uh, okay.
It's sixes. Six, uh.
It's page six.
Page six, thank you.
Oh.
Page six, I apologize. It's number twelve on page six.
Uh, number twelve on page six. A copy of notice. So page six.
Yes, I apologize. I didn't see the six tax.
Right. So. You're, you're referring to. And is this? This is the attachment to the development regulations?
Correct, it was just adopted by ordinance recently, about a year ago.
Right, okay. I got it.
Thank you. So while I touched upon this in my letter, I hadn't, um. I wasn't aware that the applicant had submitted a different application. Initially, they submitted a different form, and, uh, my assumption is either it came. I, I, I don't understand why there were two different application forms submitted. Nonetheless, this is the one that was posted on the website. And while my letter touched upon this point, that the applicant failed to identify any sections of the ordinance in which they deviate from. Um, your ordinance actually requires that, so just on that alone, the notice is defective because it's not compliant with your ordinance. But I think that while we're here, that it might make sense to talk about. Um, some of the other things I listed in my letter. And I'll just start off by giving a, a, a big picture here.
Before you go any further.
Yes.
Do you concede that the notice is sufficient on its own?
No, not at all.
Okay.
The notice.
Let, let's see where you're.
Yes, sure, sure, so, so the, to the first point, the notice is deficient because it does not cite any section of your. Ordinances in which there is a deviation from, so right off the bat, it fails to identify. Ordinances in which there's a deviation from, so right off the bat, it fails to identify. Again, where, what section of the ordinance is there a deviation? If an interested party wants to learn about this application, the ordinance does not point them in the direction of how they can check and verify your ordinance to see. How this application is either compliant or not compliant, and the extent to which a deviation is being sought. So it's absolutely deficient just on, on the basis of what your ordinance requires. But there's a whole host of other reasons that I'd like to get into, because not, the, the issues aren't just positive. Collectively, it'll paint why this application, the way it's been provided so far, is a bit misleading. If you receive the notice in the mail, and I'd like to get into that, so. The first thing which I think Mr. Simon would, would agree with, that they would advise you, is that the notice is to put a layperson on notice of what an application is all about. And that's done because it's supposed to, as, as a nearby property owner, you want to know what's being built next door. As a resident of Milburn Township, the reason why it's published in the newspaper is because you want to know what's going on in your township. And the notice is supposed to be not misleading, but be very informative to tell everyone what the heck's going on. So. When I look at your notice, aside from the point that I just made. I'm going to go one by one of the items I saw, and I'm going to start with this one because it was actually quite prevalent in the last application.
So what you're doing is that you're referring to.
My July twenty third letter.
Right.
That was submitted to the board, and I don't know if the board had, had received copies, but I would like to, to go in it, and I can certainly provide additional copies to the board.
Just, it's a little confusing, you say there are two applications that were submitted?
Um, so I believe there was an application submitted to the planning board initially. And then the planning board did not have jurisdiction to hear that application. So either an amended application or an application anew was filed to the zoning board. And my point initially was that there were, there were two different application forms used. One for the planning board application, one for the zoning board application, even though now in the township of Milburn, there is only one application form to my knowledge. And I pointed that out because when I wrote my letter, I didn't notice the difference initially, that there were two separate applications submitted. Um, but turning to, to the, and Mr. Simon, I have a copy of the first application if you need it. Um, but turning to, to the substance of my letter here.
I, I would object to any previous applications, not to subject these applications.
Okay, okay, guys, let's, let's just talk about the notice.
Okay.
Get into why you think the notice is defective.
Sure, all right. So the, the, the first point is that we spoke, or the board had spoken a lot about pre-existing non-conforming uses in the last application. A lot of commentary about that. When an applicant provides a notice to the public and says they're modifying a pre-existing non-conforming use, it has a certain connotation to it. That the use is existing, it's grandfathered in, and they're just modifying it. There's no other expansions, there's no other intensification of the use, just a modification, not permitted, but it already exists. However, the case law is very clear that when you destroy, either by, it could be by fire, it could be by flood, it could be by design. When you destroy a pre-existing non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming structure. You no longer have your grandfather protections, it's gone, and that's what is being requested by way of this application. A full demolition of the clubhouse, which is not a permitted use in the zone. And the notice is painting a story that, well, it's, it's there, but it's not an application to keep what's there. In fact, it's an application to, it requires a fully entire, entirely new use variance. And not, I'm, I'm going to use the word expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, because you're destroying your grandfather protection by removing it, no matter what the reason is. Now, I just highlighted the word expansion. The notice is also misleading because the notice only focuses on modifications. Modifications to a pre-existing non-conforming use does not trigger D two variance relief. It is only when the use is being expanded or intensified. You'll see in the notice, two things. First of all, the notice never even mentions the word use variance, that's number one, period. It only references D two. To somebody, to, to the board members, yes, the board members know what D two means. To an ordinary person who doesn't find themselves before a zoning board, probably not sure what D two means or see. Probably doesn't, do not know that, they, they wouldn't know the distinction. But secondly, the notice doesn't talk about. The expansion, the reason for the D two variance. The notice talks about modifications because the tennis courts are being relocated. But that's not truly the reason that the, that they're before the board this evening. Uh, relocation of tennis courts doesn't necessarily trigger a D two variance. What triggers a D two variance is because the use is being expanded or intensifying in some manner. And from this notice, I have no way of knowing, I have my theories, but I have no way of knowing, how is the use expanded? What is intensifying? Are you just relocating the tennis courts? Obviously, the notice says the building is being demolished, but it's branded a manner that it's being constructed in the same way, but is that true? Well, there's other C variances that are listed in the notice that are being intensified. For example, block coverage is being intensified, thirty five percent permitted in your zone, fifty one percent approximately is already existing. And rather than that number going down, that number's going up. So you also have the outdoor patio space, which if you check the architectural plans, that's significantly changing. Significantly increasing in scale, size, and scope. Does the notice speak about that? Of course not, the notice frames it that it's just the same patio that's always been there, but that's not the case when you look at the architecturals. In fact, most of the patio is covered. And. The, uh, the notice also fails to take into account any of the actual deviations in the sense that. The notice puts the public on notice that there's a deviation sought, but it doesn't say the extent to which it's sought. So if you receive a notice in the mail and it says, um, there's an increase in, in lot coverage. You'd probably say to yourself, how much is there an increase in lot coverage? Again, you're taking time out of your business schedule to come here this evening. You're a member of the public, is it a one percent increase, like we saw in the last application, we saw an eighty square foot increase? Or is it, I don't know, thirty percent increase, twenty percent increase? Those facts matter, and, and those facts were deliberately concealed to minimize the impact of this application. The, the other main changes that I wanted to make the board aware of is. Twofold, number one, for many years, I presume that there was a sleepy tennis club that existed on this property. And in many ways, that's still the case. But you have a new applicant and owner of the property, you have a for-profit entity.
I, I would object, there's no change in nonprofit that worked profit, I know this was raised in the letter, but I confirm with my client that is not the intention, and there will be no change.
Yeah, objection noted, so I have the property deed, I also have the certificate of formation, I would be happy to pass out. I also have the certificate of incorporation of Wyoming Club. The fact of the matter.
What, what's, what's the relevance?
The relevancy is this, that when you have a nonprofit, a sleepy nonprofit operating for a hundred years here. The incentives for that nonprofit are entirely different. And what is the result of that? You have different levels of traffic, different level, different levels of intensity. There's, there's different reasons why you're going to rent the club out, who are you going to rent it out to? All of these things ordinarily would tie to a D two variance, because the change in ownership signifies. That there will likely be an intensification of the uses that exist on the property, which they're also destroying by way of the club, by destroying the clubhouse. But all of these things lead to, uh, an intensification that nobody in the public would have been made aware of because of the notice. So that, that's really the relevancy of, of a change of ownership there. Um, the, the final point in the letter is that when you look at the architecturals. You'll notice that the clubhouse has no showers, no locker room. It doesn't have a pro shop that you'd ordinarily see accessory to golf club, tennis club, what does it have? It has only activity space, two bathrooms, some storage, and mechanical area. Why do I, and a kitchen, why do I point that out? Because they're, they, they could be related to each other, but the, the, the clubhouse is not incidental to the tennis courts. The clubhouse in of itself is its own separate and prin-principle use. So you could have the members playing tennis, and then what's anticipated is that the clubhouse could be rented for graduation parties to non-members. Um, could have hypothetically, you could have weddings, you could, you could have various events there. Rent, renting of the space, and it's completely detached and unrelated to a tennis use. Why is that important? Well, your ordinance doesn't allow two principal uses on the property. So while historically, and, and that's a topic for just another, another day, whether or not these uses were historic in nature as far as the. Intensity and the magnitude of the events. Um, but, but your ordinance doesn't permit two principal uses, your ordinance permits one principal use. And by destroying the clubhouse, they're eliminating their rights to two principal uses. They have to follow all the other ordinance, just like all the other residents in the, in Milburn Township. And that's really the, the juxtap of the, um, notice defects. But again, I flow back to my original statement, which I wish, I wish I had included in my letter, is that there is a reason why your ordinance requires. That all applicants who notice on it for an application in Milburn Township provide its resident, their residence. With a citation to the section of the ordinance in which they're deviating from. Your governing body determined that was very important, the case law, in my opinion, suggests that's very important, and the notice doesn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Mr. Gilson, would you like to respond to Mr. Silver's statements, just pertaining to the issue of the notice?
Yes, and, and I think it's important that it is pertaining to the issue of notice, because I think Mr. Silver has previewed his object or case this application. But what he's raised is not really relevant to the notice issue. He may believe that a D one variance is necessary. We do not believe a D one variance is necessary, and our position is supported by your planner support that was issued today, which analyzed this application under a D two standard. They're the irresponsible of my client to revise this notice to include a D one variance, when they do not believe a D one variance is necessary. Now, there may become a point in the testimony where the board feels and agrees with Mr. Silver's position. At that time, we would have to reevaluate our options as to whether we should re-notice for a D one. But at this time, we would not notice for a D one variance, because we do not believe a D one variance is necessary. As far as the intensity of the use, what's going to go on at the property, all of those things. These are all anticipatory objections that Mr. Silver is making to the testimony that we will put forward. It has nothing to do with the application that's submitted. If you read this notice, you can clearly see that this is an application for an existing tennis club that's been there for over a hundred and ten years. To knock down a structurally unsound and unsightly structure and, and build another structure in its place. I think that throughout the course of the testimony, you obviously have, hear from our expert witnesses, you hear from the objectors' expert witnesses, you hear cross-examination of same. But I think that more or less almost all of Mr. Silver's arguments can be boiled down to the fact that the issues he's raising are issues of fact. That will be hashed out in testimony and not issues of notice. My client has properly noticed what they, the relief that they are seeking, and they have properly done so within the time period required.
Okay. Um. I, they say. With space, I'll go right ahead.
So this was first presented to the planning board?
No.
No.
It was not.
It was not, it's the mission, the original application was filed in November of twenty twenty four, however, they used our old zoning board application. So when the DR saved and was deemed to complete it, so they submitted. It on our real application, which they did, and you people. And it was, it was never filed with the plan. Was it, the, her letter from November, clearly indicates zoning board assessment, garbage application. It came to the zoning board, you know, I wrote to my.
But that, that explains that that's why they're like, don't have.
Yeah.
False.
Right, yeah, because that's not relevant to this, or we're talking about that. So, um, let me sort of, oh, just make. Some comments, and then I'm going to try to, to address some of, some of these issues. Um, first comments are, is that notice is jurisdiction. That the notice is bad or deficient. The board cannot proceed with hearing the application. The notice would have to be redone properly and then published to the newspaper or now online newspaper. And served twelve property owners in two hundred feet, okay? That's number one. Number two, um, I don't agree with Mr. Gilson's comment that I may have misunderstood it. But from what I understood, what he was saying is that, well, if it's determined that there's, for example, a, a use variance that, um. The board finds late, later in the proceedings, that then they can reevaluate and then if necessary, re-notice. I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't think that you can just re-notice as you go forward, because. You've already presented arguably testimony, let's say at the initial hearing, or if there's two hearings that go to the belief. That you're either seeking or opposing, and now you're adding something and you're re-noticing, you could be doing it from the get-go since the notice. That's, so that's comment number two. So. Mr. Silver's comment about first of what the, the ordinance says, that you need to cite the specific variances and specific sections. Well. That's not technically what the law says. So what the law says is, and I'm going to cite to, um, Mr. Silver's, and by the way, both letters were very, very well written. Um. I'm going to cite to a section, and in fact, I think Mr. Gilson agrees with it. Pursuant to Ms. Valanu's law, adequate notice ensures that members of the general public. Who may be affected by the nature and character of the proposed development are fairly apprised, fairly apprised. Of same, so that they make an informed, so that they may make an informed determination as to whether they should participate in the hearing. Or at the very least, look more closely at the plans and the other documents on file. Okay, that's the law, that's the Pearlmark case, and statutorily, under section eleven of Ms. Valanu's law. The three things that they, the four things that we talk about are, notice needs to show the date and time and place of the hearing. Two, the nature of the matters considered. Nature of the matters considered. Three, identi- uh, accurate identification of the property proposed by development, by street address. Indeed, the location, times at which any maps and documents for which approval is sought are available. So you have these two different areas. So. And I believe that both counsel agreed that the threshold issue is. Will a layperson who reads the notice know enough to either go to the hearing or. Contact Eileen whose phone number is on the notice to find out how to review the file or just come down to city vaults or review the file? So.
I asked, I just, one quick question. So, does the township committee have the right to, uh, pass an ordinance that says in your notice. You must include the specific provisions of the law under which you're seeking a variance? And they go above and beyond what it appears you're reading this statutory law?
I'm going to answer it this way. This board does not have the power to determine whether any ordinance that is adopted by the township committee, mayor township committee. Is valid or invalid, okay? Stuck with whatever the ordinance is said. That being said. Your role right now is to assess whether. The notice is sufficient for purposes of jurisdiction under the law. And there's law that says that you do not need to cite to every single ordinance provision. By name, by section of the ordinance. Number two, if you look at. The, the Pearlmark case would says whether they should, at the very least, look more closely at the plans and the other documents in the file. If you go look at the plans and the other documents in the file. In two separate areas, there's a listing of what the variances are that are required, the ordinance segments, and the deviations. Okay, so. It is true that. You need to identify if you're going to seek a form of D or reduce variance, they, they state D two variance, they don't. state that it's technically a use variance, although they separate the D two variance from the C or bulk variances in the notice. With regard to the issue as to whether you need a D one variance and you don't, um I think it is true that we will hear testimony through the course of the hearing on all of these issues. And the board may ultimately determine that Mr. Gilson's right, Mr. Silver's right, or they're both half right, or they're both half wrong. When an objector or a concerned party, in this case, raises notice issues to the applicant and to the board, what that means is that the applicant is on notice that these issues have been raised. And if the board rules favorably on the application, whatever that may be, if they've ruled favorably on the application, that the interested party, Mr. Silver's client, may in fact take an appeal and challenge that approval based on defective notice or the reasons laid out in Mr. Silver's letter and his comment tonight about what the ordinance says. Ultimately, the applicant has to make a decision whether he, she, or it wants to proceed and take that risk or whether the applicant decides, you know what? It's not worth it over an allegation, whether I believe it or I don't believe it, as to notice. And in some cases, and I've mentioned this to both Mr. Silver and Mr. Gilson, that we would have if the applicant agreed to carry the hearing, to have the applicant's attorney send to the concerned citizen's attorney the notice and say, you revise it, you tell me what, why, where you think it's deficient, and I'll look at it so that we are going to get rid of this issue as to notice, and it will not be raised later on. So both parties were well represented, are aware of that and that uh possibility. And in this case, Mr. Gilson has decided that um he is, his client wants to proceed with the application, he believes the notice is fine. Mr. Silver has put the applicant on notice. Where does the board come in? If the board believes that, notwithstanding what these attorneys say, that the notice is bad, and we've had circumstances where the notice is just bad, the notice is wrong. It's talking about a different property, right? They forgot to send notices out to to residents who live in two hundred feet, right? And you can't start, okay? Here, I believe that an argument can be made, frankly, either way as to the adequacy of the notice. I will say that based on my experience and knowledge of the case law, the Pearlmark case and its progeny on the issue of notice, um and I've argued it both sides, as both counsel knows, um I do believe that on balance, that the notice does fairly apprise the public as to the nature of the matters considered, to the point where if they were interested, they would come to the hearing to learn more or to go get the file, review the file, the files both available in town hall office, it's also available online. So I think that it's up to the board ultimately. But my advice would be that the notice, albeit not perfect, but I believe it checks off the boxes for purposes of section eleven of Ms. Valanu's law, the Pearlmark case and its progeny to allow the applicant to proceed. There's no um there's no provision here that are, that tell me that we can't proceed at all with this with this application. So that's my advice to this board, but Mr. Gilson is well aware, and I don't agree with you, I do, I if if it turns out that the board says in in X number hearings that, you know, it it needs a D warrant use variance, and this is why, and then we go back to the notice and we say, you know, it was the public fairly apprised. You might, I've had cases where you got to start over, right, at huge expense.
And I understand, and I believe that we, you know, we take that risk of that we would need to start over. I also, we have any minor changes that occur, we have our catch-all provision. As the board is aware, the case law is that you have to notice any variances that were on notice or knowing of at the time of the hearings, or should something come up minor than the changes during the course of the hearing, I believe that our catch-all provision would also um cover any of those instances.
Yeah, I I catch-all provisions.
I I will notice, Mr. Simon, that we have noticed for all variances that your planner, the board's planner called out in their report.
Let me just say, with regard to catch-all provisions, so that what 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 Mr. Gilson is talking about is a is a statement in the notice which says, lastly, the applicant requests that the board grant any additional approvals, permits, variances, interpretations, waivers, or exceptions reflected in the plans and materials filed, the same may be amended or revised from time to time without further notice or determined to be necessary during the review and proceeding of this application. Very appropriate, we see the catch-all provision all the time. The only caveat to that is that there is case law that states that you can't rely on a catch-all provision when you're dealing with a form of a use variance. And because issues have been raised, particularly by Mr. Silver, as to whether there's additional or different use variances required, um I don't know that catch-all provision would would cover those. But I think that both counsel have done a very good job of laying out different notice issues, um both verbally and in writing. Um, and I guess at this point, it would be up to the board to make a decision on its own um as to whether you believe that the notice is at least sufficient enough under the statute and the applicable case law that I described would be comfortable in allowing the application to proceed.
And uh Mr. Simon and Mr. Gilson, if I may, um I would be willing to stipulate to waive any jurisdictional complaints in the future if you were to renotice in accordance with the letter, so that issue goes off the table. If you're not willing to renotice, that issue is going to remain on the table.
The reason that the that we can't renotice is that there's a disagreement as to whether a D one variance is necessary, so we would not.
Yeah, hold on.
I want to touch upon that.
What, well, yeah. So we have had cases from time to time where there is a disagreement as to the sufficiency of a notice. And one side says the notice is sufficient, the other side says, no, it's not, they fail to um include in the notice the following, whether it's a statutory provision, whether it's an ordinance provision, whether it's a description of the proposed use, could be anything. And what we have done in those cases where the counsel have agreed, okay, we're not going to take any chances, we're just going to renotice, is that the notice can be stated in a manner that covers both scenarios. So for example, let's say there was a a a use variance required in this application. Use that's not permitted in the zoning, it's not grandfathered or otherwise. The notice could say in part, to the extent required by the board, or although the applicant does not believe that a use variance is required, comma, should the board conclude that use variance is is required after the conclusion of all the testimony and evidence, comma, the applicant re- um hereby requests uh relief from that provision. So you can couch it in a way where obviously the applicant is going to disagree with maybe a lot or everything of what the objector is going to say. But that doesn't mean that it's an outright admission that, oh, yes, we need this additional relief. It's just just to cover the applicant so that regardless of where the board goes at the end, whether they think that there's two variances or twenty variances, that it's covered either way. And that this way, regardless of how the board rules on the application, that if the losing party thinks of appeal, they're not going to raise notice issues because it's already been agreed to, it's already covered in the amended notes.
As far as to to the extent it's necessary, the applicant doesn't need, doesn't believe it's needed, all of that language is totally fine from my standpoint if that was something you wanted to include in the notice.
Well, well.
Make sure the public is really informed at least of what we're alleging as applications now.
Understood, and Mr. Silver, I appreciate that you don't have the standing to waive jurisdiction for any objector. It's definitely would stop another objector from raising the notice issue going forward, so for that reason, we would require this to proceed.
Whoa. I think you said differently. If you proceed tonight, which you have the right to do, of course, that besides Mr. Silver, there may be other people who are not represented by Mr. Silver who may raise notice issues in the past, in the future, excuse me. Conversely, if you address all of Mr. Silver's issues and you make the notice, you know, a bulletproof or otherwise, and somebody raises an additional issue, right, that neither one of you picked up, and the board and the board planner didn't pick up, that is correct, and that happens every time, no matter what, whatever the notice is. So I just wanted to clarify your your thought.
Understood, and I'm happy to discuss this with my client again for, if you have a one-minute resource, but I believe.
Let's let's take a five minutes. Just to, because there there was a lot, you guys both did a really good job of articulating your your positions.
Thank you.
So take five minutes. Thanks, Chris. Mr. Gilson?
After discussing with my client, we would like to adjourn this to the next available date, and we will renotice.
So, thank you. So just to be clear, Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Okay. What you stated in terms of waiving objections, you're going to work with Mr. Gilson in terms of the form of the notice so that you are comfortable enough. And Mr. Gilson, you're comfortable enough. We're not giving away the store here. And and then if you guys have any questions, you can ask me. Or then we would renotice, you guys would renotice it, and we have another date.
Correct.
Well, um. Um, obviously, we don't want to do it on the 11th, because March 25th and the 25th. Um, and March 12th as well.
Yeah.
On the 25th.
Yeah.
I know, on the 25th.
Yeah.
I'm also unavailable.
Let's be clear, 25th of August.
Correct, yeah. We only have one meeting in September. The 29th is when you have to use second. So the only.
So you're saying the next available date would be October 25th?
Come on, come on.
I mean, other matters.
We can't, we can't knock matters, you know, that are already scheduled off. So, you know, we're limited to, you know, our available date. Yeah, and then we're sharing with the board of ed. Because we share with the board of ed now. This isn't our usual space. So we have fewer meetings than we would normally have due to, you know, the space issue and having to share with board of ed. Who have their meetings on the same day, so we do, or on my place as well.
No, but you want to do this the same way as the.
We're, we're never going to get to it. It's too big of an application. We're, we're going to call everyone in and not even get to it. So, you know.
And yeah, October is the first vacation. I just want to say who you want.
I, I mean, is there even the potential for a different hearing date from what you know, given the board events?
There's no other date available in September. 29th was the only one that was open because of the Jewish holidays, Cyber Day. Board of Education dates was just the 29th was the only date we had that. And the same is true with the October dates. It's come this way, then Board of Education, and that was the only. Day.
Question is, so, so, right.
What, we got the possibility of a special meeting, but that would obviously not be on a Monday. It would have to, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what the board's availability is, but as a potential, just because of our looking at meeting dates in the fall, which is unusual.
Can I make a suggestion? That maybe, maybe we would cater it for notice purposes. Well, we're going to have to renotice anyway. But when is it? Our next meeting is when?
August 11th.
August 11th. So before you all send out, you can work on your notice between now and August 11th, and maybe.
I don't think they're going to get it published.
Come in.
Sure.
So that maybe by the August 11th date, I don't mean can assess whether there's a date or a day other than a Monday in September that where this room is available, the board is available. So that instead of waiting until October 20th, then maybe we can commence the hearings earlier. But we won't know that right now because we need to assess the availability of this room. So I'm suggesting that even though we're going to renotice anyway, that don't send out any notices for October 20th yet, because maybe we can potentially find our.
Understood. And obviously, you know, we're going to work with the board, but we, that puts us well outside the 120 days from the time we were deemed to move.
So I mean, when is your?
This is the.
September 23rd. It's 120-day requirement.
Yeah. May 29th.
I'm sorry?
It was deemed clear May 29th. 120 days is September 25th.
Okay. So my recommendation would be then to ask the applicants now if they would extend the time to the end of October, if the October 20th dates can end up going. But we would try to see by the next board date whether we can find a different date for you guys that's earlier.
Understood. I have a bit there. Through, through October, at this point, yes.
Absolutely right.
And I'm happy to, we're, my clients have to be flexible. I just, I do have multiple professionals that are going to testify, so you just have to make sure that there's a special meeting date that they're available, but we'll work with board and the applicant to make sure accommodate that.
So, so for now, we have October 20th, and the applicant's going to renotice, but between now and August 11th, which is our next meeting, we see we can accommodate all parties, the applicant, the interested parties, and trying to find those.
Is that clear to everyone in the audience? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who has anything that they need to say not related to this matter or any matter before us? Only if it's unrelated.
No, this is really. At what point do you see the weaker plan?
Available online.
It's available now.
Um, don't see anyone else. So it's all up to. The motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?